When the United States of America. In the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. In a peaceful.
With one where to see address this rule.
Morning, Tuesday morning.
Yeah, morning.
Let's need to order. Looking for a motion to.
Is there any additions or questions?
I have none.
I'll make a motion. Second half.
Motion second, all in favor.
Hi.
Approval of amendments from two weeks ago, Monday, May. Given a hard look, somebody gives a bit.
A second.
There's motions, second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, new business secondary wrote totally permits, Zach, you got some drains to talk about.
Well, like the old C number.
Got a couple utility permits first, um, the first one is record value electric. Basically putting the service in, um, this is Jasper section seventeen and eight. The. His room. West End. Getting served. I don't know, I think someone else. So I'm but I I have a bird for anything gonna happen up there or not. I just know they're electric service, so.
No, that's leisure.
That's what?
Leisure, I think.
Leisure, yeah. You're right. That's first one. Uh, second one is for western power, um, this is. In conjunction with our, uh. Per work project that we have doing on next state to state stop a manning, um, this is basically moving. Relocating their power to the back, leaving right away, so we can, we work, we do when it comes time to, uh. Move here, so. Um, they'll be all all underground. For the road crossings and some other areas to go on, so.
But.
And something that isn't ready, um, but the whole grid possibly be, and I shouldn't say three miles, I don't think they go all the way north there, um, I think they. Independent, well, then we saw they stand by thing, or they, oh, they might go further. I have to double check.
I think it's for start, now it is.
I think it never was. It's so. But that's without, that's without this part, so. So we've been working pretty closely with them, we've been pretty. Pretty good work with on the solely all of them. Any more questions on the audience? I'm here. Open your motion.
On that, oh, one question that western power, are they gonna do all that boring one there, the whole thing, every single one of them, the five or around, it's like.
There's.
Eleven pages of it. Nine pages.
They're gonna bore certain areas. The whole dotted line isn't a bore.
Okay.
It's just road crossings and vice magrages and things like that, I believe. Well, they're gonna plow in, it's gonna be underground. Also, these are based on their state. I said, cool.
I'll make a motion. Second that.
Motion second to approve usually prints, all in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, next thing, we got a few drains. First one is drain ninety, section thirty-three of Richland. So hole in the waterways, six inch line, um, I do not believe that any of these have been fixed as of yet. Um, there must be a bug downstream from from where that. Hole is somewhere, so. Something we'll be looking into, but just off of two seventy street, west of velvet.
Can you say that again, you're plugging.
There, there's a a hole in the in the waterway, so most of the timeline must be plugged. Downstream from that, so we'll have to. Give some further evaluation.
Thank you.
Next one is drain forty-eight, Jasper section eight. This would be just northwest of Williamsboro. Um, there's a couple different holes and a four inch tile. We've been, we've been in this area fixing things before, so.
Do you think there's.
I don't know if that one's a plug, I think that one's just the, it's a seam or a broken tile that's taken over.
There are four, but there are two different lines.
So on the north side there, up closer to Montan, those are the two that are the district line, there's a private line that comes off. Off of these, that's not our concern, the dotted ones are private.
Okay.
Right. Right. But there's intakes at the, in in on Union Avenue, but the line itself is not accounted. And then the last one is drain sixty-seven, uh, median section seven. The tiles plugged near the fence line, we're thinking it's possibly true risks for this one, um, not dug into this one yet either. Um, but, uh. It's okay. There's a twelve inch going out and then a couple of sixties that come off of that, or maybe an eight. Eight, then goes to a six. Or ten goes to a six, but, uh. Got to do some more data in there, but we're thinking there's a bloodline there close to that fence line. So it will be maybe more deep that can show up over the next six months.
Oh, about the right, yeah. I can make a motion to approve, uh, drain forty-eight, drain sixty-seven, and drain ninety.
A second.
Motion second to approve the drain, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Driving the government, I've seen, I've seen a lot of, uh. Like washouts where the culvers fill through and stuff like that, that red, uh, maintainers put red flags out, seem like there's a ton of them.
There is, this this hard range would really make them show up, whether it's, uh. Culver separations, when it's concrete pipe, or those seams start leaking, or, uh, bad C M B that's starting to run out. That will find it, but, uh. But later, it has the way us.
Showing us, yeah. There is a ton of them.
There is. Overall, I think we're very relatively involved with things with that, we haven't had water on the road a couple places, but. Overall, we've been pretty lucky, but a lot of washing along the edges of the road where it's washed, they're going.
Yep.
A real down trees, not really, there's a, there's a couple, but nothing, nothing of, don't know really. I did get work late last week as well, the U of D, because then. Johnny this week, so there'll be those tubes.
They just. They put them on the main road blackout when I was coming by.
So this week, they'll extended the neck of the hill.
They do that to to give money to different projects or what, because I'll drive over a lot of that's.
Keep, keep driving, um. Um, every four years, they try to do the build entire county, they don't do every road, they'll leave certain roads, then go and jerk play between to get traffic counts on the other roads, but, uh. Our data from four years ago wasn't real accurate because COVID, and so we kind of, kind of, we've been waiting eight years to get to, you know, really.
Yes.
So it's good, it's good to have those and see where they're at.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I just see through when I turn off, so you wonder out there. Yeah.
And we don't have any deal with this matter, but they're out there.
That's why I wondered.
He come on gravel, so they do. I haven't seen his man probably yelling, well, those are coming north today, or they must have been putting my loans out yesterday, so with some. Or some yesterday.
Really?
Uh, something must have got me. Hi, thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
I am number two, approve payables. Forty-five, some couple of, um. Ones, yeah. From. I T credit card statements.
Yeah, so the new total for payables will be two hundred sixty thousand four twenty-seven forty-two.
Four twenty-seven forty-two.
Two hundred and sixty thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-two cents.
I would if I have a question.
I didn't.
Question.
Um, Zach on that, the rock, is that almost all all done, I've seen that big bill come through.
Yep, that's, that's the last of the rock, that'll all from, uh. The bicep.
Okay.
Don't want I see there's quite a difference in transportation.
Autopsies, yeah.
Uh, if you remember, we put about, I think, ten thousand dollars in the ME, the last budget amendment, and we didn't even have enough to pay everything. Um, I'm assuming we'll have to look at that line. Well, we already got the budget done for forty-five.
I just think there's quite a difference, it's different organizations.
So is that something?
So like, is that one?
Well, I think we need to have a discussion.
Isn't it? Hey, do that.
Same. That was that double fatality, so yeah, um, so that's the state, those gets pricey when we have to send them to the state, and then, of course, you have. Um, transportation.
So who's charging us out of state?
Yeah.
Oh.
I guess nineteen hundred for autopsy, now they have to do, there's one there was sixteen hundred for a toxicology on top of it.
So, um, what we did with the bills is we looked at them and, um, first we paid the local vendors first, funeral homes are M Es. And then, um, the older ones for the state we paid, but we're still.
So we have to the month after this, we'll be okay then.
I'll tell somebody first.
Yeah. We're ba- we basically spent what we had, and we'll just have to hold the other ones, but it's just a. Causes problems then, because in July, then we're paying a bunch of them that were actually for three years for. But yes, you don't have any way of knowing how many people are gonna pass away, and how many people are gonna, yeah, it's just important.
Attended deaths and.
On, on them autopsies like that, um. I don't.
There are questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the payables, two hundred and sixty thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-two cents.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three, approve cigarette permit, Owl's Corner Oil Company.
Um, this through your information, this will be the only one we have. Moving forward, and we used to have three corner station and the country club, country club's not gonna sell tobacco products and corner station is no longer, so. So unless somebody else comes along with it.
Okay.
We have that traffic guy, we need him a permit.
Yeah.
Or.
I don't think. Yeah.
But he can travel for.
Like rolling cigars, yeah. Yeah, there's, I'm making motion to approve this, uh. How's corner oil slash Sparky's one stop? That was.
Motion in a second, all in favor, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Parents, Courtney, there's nothing for me to sign.
There is.
For approved plants. One requested by Alex White Drive.
Well, when I looked at our reader, it looked like there was either an acreage or something there. An acreage or, I'm not sure if there's a house on it or not, I didn't dig that deep into it.
It sounds existing on that little.
Yeah.
Can you make a motion to approve this plot? For Alex Woodtrough.
Motion second to. Black dollar to the front, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion parents. Number five. Adomage County Supervisor, District Five, Rethinkation. Cindy.
Acknowledge, um. Almost everybody probably already knows that I'm, my family's gonna be moving back to Virginia, um, therefore I will not be in the district, so, um. I, I.
What day?
Uh, June fourteen, um. I've enjoyed my time learning about county operations, um. I feel like my time has been. I feel like I've made a difference, and I hope that, um, you all feel that way. And I know that I have helped to improve employee safety, and, uh. So that's, that's really all I like.
Thanks for your time.
Over there, but I don't really have anything good.
What does it look like for public knowledge, um, to replace her?
There's procedure.
Yeah.
Um, so. When there's a vacancy that in the supervisors, the county treasurer, county reporter, and myself. Decide whether or not we will choose to appoint a person, a person to fill the seat, or we can choose to have a special election. Um, if we would choose to have a do an appointment, then the public has a certain number of days to request a special election, so. If there are people that weren't happy with the appointment, they could petition to have a special election. If that would happen, it'd probably be an election sometime in July, I'm guessing, date wise. The problem we have is November will be here before you know it, so, and there'll be somebody elected to that seat, so, um, I have not met with the reporter or the treasurer. I think we're gonna try to do that this week and decide what route we're gonna take, um, obviously, we have until the fourteenth to. Tell it's effective anyway, there's not a vacancy yet, but, uh, we'd like to have a plan in place moving forward.
And the primary will be done by then.
Yeah, it would be, yep.
So question we were talking, means this will be if there is an appointment by you three. And the election is November fifth, instead of waiting until January one to be sworn in, the new supervisor might take effect November eleventh, the first Monday following the election.
Correct, so, yeah.
Oh, so the appointment you're making, it's probably gonna be like three to four months. Set up till the end of the year.
So the newly elected, the newly elected supervisor, while their term officially starts the first of the year. They actually do take office in November, so they almost get, you know, they get, uh, their regular term plus that extra month or whatever.
Yep, so, seriously.
That's on Jim.
Yeah, uh, that, after that Monday, yeah.
So we need a motion to formally acknowledge.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge your resignation.
Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Parents.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Number six, approve change order, number eight for H V A C replacement and interior improvements. So. This is a, um. The last change order, the last scheduled change order, I go within a week or so of completion. And some of these go way back, and I can try to answer any questions. Um, got a copy of each one, as we need to go into detail, but I think we approve most of the change requests as they happen, this is just the formal change order. And it shows on here, our, uh, contingency balance and what we're gonna end up with.
Was there some additional electric put in the driver's license? This one percent.
Which C R?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
I don't remember all.
See, I think, I know we've discussed all of them.
At a backflow, backflow meter in the power, there wasn't a cheap city request.
No.
At the tune of about fifty-three hundred dollars.
Yeah, there's two more that I wish he would have done. But yeah, I looked at it on Friday, and I did talk to Cole this morning about it.
That's the.
But it would be another three or four grand in that room, so, I mean, the mess is kind of gone.
That's the removal of those. That was the removal of them, right?
Yeah, there's another room, third on.
Yeah.
Northeast corner.
The exterior chase that for the chimney, I think it doesn't know.
It's outside, that's the, um, where the old, um. Generator was, where they in front of the courthouse.
Oh, okay.
There's still a chase there.
Okay. Now, otherwise, I just, I just doesn't remember that seven sixty.
And I think, so Courtney, help me on this, the hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars we're gonna have left over. And we still have, essentially, you know, we still have to pay, I think roughly got to twenty thousand commissioning fee.
I don't think I saw that email.
We have a hundred and seventy-one, right, left, and it's a hundred and seventy-two thousand left.
What's this, that testing, special balance, is that part of the?
The way I would intend it is not, I've never been through one of these, the way, I don't understand the commission thing, and the state requires you have to do.
We run and make sure they work perfectly.
Yeah. And it's like a third, isn't a third party, no, I think so, yeah.
The only can get one person to be, then it's made out of a Dell.
Really? Well, you looking for a motion?
Yeah, looking for a motion to approve the final things.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, change order number eight.
I'll second that.
You have a motion, second, please, chamber number eight, S H, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I get a signature on that, and I'll bottom right.
Joint, approve joint drainage assessments.
Okay, so. It does, so I heard from Michelle Fields, who's the drainage clerk in Green County, they have two drains they wanna do an assessment on, their joint drains, um, so it's. Drainage ditch, it's Green County's one fifty, R eighty-six, and then, uh, Green County sixty-one, forty-one. Um, on the eighty-six, there was a blowout on a twenty-four inch tile. They do, they wanna do a twenty-one point six percent assessment. Uh, they say they need about thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to do that repair. Um, on forty-one, it's repair on a ten inch tile. They think they need about forty-eight hundred dollars, the assessment on that is forty-nine point two percent. Um, they do set their stamped horns at six percent, which is the same as what we would do, and that's if. Somebody can't come up with the money, they can basically borrow it at six percent, uh, we don't have a lot of people that take advantage of that. Especially that was paid, but.
Exactly, they do their own repair, or they sit down. I don't think they do, I'm not hard pressure, I don't think. So these were probably actual quotes, I think.
I'm assuming, yeah, I didn't.
Versus estimates is what we're used to.
I think they'll use that, uh. I think, uh.
Temple.
Yeah, that would, that would make sense, yeah.
I think that's.
So when they, when they say this is joint, what do you mean by that?
Um, share it.
The water drains for directing probably in.
Green County.
They just call it a shared drain.
Here, here, Green County, here, Carol County, so this. Kind of line runs in there, and that's based on a percentage.
Percentage of. So on Carol Pine's side, we can charge him too.
Well, this charge through the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we.
Could put dams on apple, having been stopped, go across the.
I'm it.
He makes up people happy, he makes up people upset.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to.
Thank you.
I have motion second to approve joint drainage assessments with the county, all in favor, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Number, review approved Ricky building, retaining, while quotes.
Here's, so I got three bids back, I reached out to four people, um, one texted me this morning, said they weren't going to bid it. Uh, I, I text all of them, so I have it in, uh. Proof of what we didn't want done, um.
So same scope of work for all of them.
Exactly, exactly, um, and the last, the only thing that was, uh, up in the air was the. Backfill in the river rock, I mean, I, I, I told him to bid it separate, but maybe, uh. I said, it depends on the county, if we had them, I didn't know, so. That's one thing we did.
We don't have, like, we have a piece of thirty stuff that.
I didn't.
Get off the road, and as.
Yeah. So, so that might be something we have to. Have us do later, I don't know, it might not be in the bids.
Passing around, or are we getting approved today, are we?
You have the option. Do you have?
What's that?
Do you have a suggestion, or?
I haven't even seen them, I told them to put them on the sealed zip. I didn't want to be skewed, you know. Yes. Um, no, that was one that.
We have one from them last.
I, I know. And, um. Bob Oliver said on the property, that's. Joining us, um. This morning, he texted me, said he wasn't gonna quote it, and this weekend, he said that he was just gonna look over the old quote that we had, I said, and we'll make sure, because we, I changed a little bit of the scope of work on there, you know? So. I don't remember what that was at, do you?
I, uh, Zach has, it's on this.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready to, I think we need to discuss these quotes further.
Yep, that's fine.
Unless, um.
Well, and the thing is, this is.
We have mindset side. The funds will be available July one, so last year we got one minute, but, uh.
Well, and the bids are all public now, so we, um. When that happens, and you try to get more bids, they'll probably come in. Close to that, even the lowest amount or whatever. Close to that, either the lowest amount or whatever.
We have to operate off of these everything.
Yeah, unless you're not happy with.
I reached out to four people, so.
Yeah, I would say.
You showed four people. That's uh, that's the additional. I told him to put on the side the rock. He has two bids there. So I didn't know what we would do there. It is a, it is gonna be an undertaking though.
So are they gonna pour on the south side of the building? Are they gonna pour?
I just had him go up to the building and reattach back into that.
So this is just on that north wall then?
North wall, there's eight of uh, eight foot of. Driveway of. Cause you're gonna have to at least cut four foot. So we, I said go eight, cause there's a crack all the way down that thing around seven foot. Um, you ha- you have to cut into the neighbor's property at least four foot to dig down and get that wall back out of there. You can't do it without.
The properties of the west.
North. North of the wall. The parking. Yeah. And I don't remember what's on our's old one is, I don't. Something you could look up.
Unless you wanna, if you wanna include that one in your consideration, then you could address it next week too.
That's what we should do.
How long ago was that one?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I think we need to pick one.
I think you need to work off these.
He said uh. That he had put a bid in last year and then this morning eight o'clock said we're not going to get a bid in in time. I, I look at them to make sure the scope of work is what I asked. What I asked first.
Courtney, I've got it in my car. What, how much do we put in that stuff? Do we put fifty?
Either forty, I hope it's forty.
I've got it in my car.
You can, I'm thinking it was forty.
All the way was fifteen, Ricky was forty.
Sure was. Yes.
It's, this is one thing.
My writing, but it's your receipt, so.
Yeah.
It's not to make sure.
None of these include if uh, mid America.
Moving the pole.
Charges anything on that pole. That pole is uh. Till you dig into it, we don't know, cause there's a four, it's four foot. From the pole of bill. And then is it below the ground? Another four foot, is that pole gonna fall? Did he brace it? We don't know. And um, nobody wants it live like that, so.
Well, that's something that's, yeah, outside of. So how are they gonna put anchors in it, put anchor back in it?
Um, dead man's. I put dead man's in. I told him I want at least four dead man's on there, especially the tall part. What's that? Yeah, they all look like they. Doing what the scope is. Yeah.
You wanna know the least expensive?
Yeah, I would say.
Plus two thousand.
The rock, everyone would be.
So the other two don't have.
Plus twenty three, forty five, so that makes it.
No, uh, don't even add the rock. The other two didn't put a rock in there. That's something that's gonna be additional or a lot of town or something. I don't know. Cause it's kind of unforeseen how much rocks gonna get removed out of there. I mean, it's hard to.
So they range from fifty nine, eight fifty. To forty nine, seven, 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 to forty four.
I would say we go, I'm making a motion every go ahead. That is uh.
Um, B E W.
BMW. BMW.
BMW. Concrete solutions. You've got the same thing.
It is the way they put.
I think personally, I think this one's out of line. I, I think this guy has the most experience of. All these in here.
Four thousand or forty.
He made a motion for, he's looking for a second.
So. Make sure we say the name right.
So Mike, you're. We don't have to take most of it. Right, responsible, thank you.
You're welcome.
What?
I mean, the business card, who is?
BMW concrete, look at theirs, their, look at them in front of their D F. Noble Avenue. Okay.
B and W. On B and W. Concrete solutions and the amount of.
She just bits forty.
Is that, is that the one or? You want?
He's looking for a second, otherwise.
I have a second. The quote, DB and W concrete solutions and the amount of forty four thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Fix the Ricky wall.
Discussion.
Uh, I'm, I'm not for that quote, but there's a motion in a second, so.
We need to discuss.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now's the time.
I, I just said, but I.
Yeah.
With experience, I.
Got me thinking that too as well.
Five, five, five grand's not nothing when you're coming to a wall that's falling over right now. I mean. There's a lot of unknowns there, a lot. You know that. With roads and construction and um. That thing is uh. We need the proper sepoles, the proper tiling behind there. Uh. Water is, and dirt is what's pushing that thing out right now. So uh, experience on my side, I would say. Is what I'm, what I'm after. Um. No, I just told all of them I want it done this year before end of October, you know, I wanna.
It's fiscal year.
This too, yeah.
It's last year. So it's like, it looks like we're gonna fall short of the money, so.
When you say fiscal year though, are you talking twenty?
We've got to really tell next.
Yes, 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 yes. But I want, I said it. I'd like to have it done by the end of October. Yes.
Except that.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, do they come with some kind of warranty?
No. Most of them don't. This, this, that, these support a lot of walls. Concrete creators afford a ton of ones. And this is not a.
Not an entry level job.
I, I think we should do some more research on, I mean, let's just. Do we need a little bit today?
Yeah, I think we do. We have. We, I've showed it to four people. We've got three bids back on it. We actually had a fourth, the other one bid it last year, didn't finish it, but.
Do we, I mean, since we're talking about experience, do we know how long this B and W? Concrete solution, how long have they been in business?
I know, top of yours.
I do know that's a couple years.
How long?
Basically, folks spent his whole life. The, what uh, what happens if it votes two two on the day like today?
They want to see another motion.
So we have a motion in a second on the little bit, so you guys should.
B and W to repair the wall, thirty four thousand.
One hundred fifty.
I'm. I would, Mike, I mean, just looking at these for the last ten minutes, I know. Yeah, concrete, create, concrete creators in the uh, forty nine, seven.
Can I help those or you should keep them on file?
I would like a. Can you scan email that just cause I. That way when we go to. Like literally thirty seconds.
We just approved the median bit.
Yeah, if you would.
We had three bids, the highest was fifty nine. So number nine, state public defender lease extension. Or I can.
That's the amount.
This is from Barbara Benham. Says, any public defender lease will expire on June eleventh, and we are interested in renewing this lease for a two or three year term. Can you advise if you would be agreeable to our request for this extension? Right now, they pay a hundred and fifty a month, Courtney?
A year.
A year, I'm sorry.
And it might be one twenty five.
Okay.
Yeah, I did not look that up, but I'm. It's more about, not really about the money. It's more just providing a space. I know the county attorney liked that we had a space available. Yeah.
Extended, but. These were kind of a remodel, I'm not so sure we couldn't thought fault that price a little bit.
My only concern about doing that is we should keep it on an annual. Renewal. Be a multi-year, because we're not supposed to be multi-year pledging money or anything like that. So if I need recognition, we need to. Not that we're pledging money, we're receiving rent, but. It could be advantageous for us to do it here. We hadn't even asked them for a specific dollar amount last time. That's just what they offered.
What'd they offer?
I, I, it's either one twenty five or one fifty annually. Now, there hasn't been anybody in the position for. Quite some time. And we kind of booted them out when we were doing the construction to begin with, so.
They seem portable instead of, they were in the old evidence room, way back, and then now. And maybe one of those.
Rooms.
The offices would be a permanent uh. Location on a, if.
For it's a hundred and fifty bucks a year? That's cheap. It's supposed to be cheap.
Well, I think it's more that the county's doing a public service.
So um, the question is, I wanted to see Courtney respond to him and say the board chose to keep it on an annual basis. This is a multi-year contract. This is question number one. Question number two, it sounds like is. The dollar amount we're charging.
I mean, means we did the renovation, I think it. Do a little bit more.
Or is it more about the service we're.
I, I wanna, I wanna make sure we, I still want to provide a service, but I think.
Why, why are they um, looking for two, three year terms?
Yeah, so they don't have to go through this, renew it every.
Every year.
It's my guess.
I would, I would assume the same thing.
And with other counties, they probably have some similar.
It don't bother me either way.
I have no problem with extending the lease. I think it's a service that we, we need to provide for the public. I said.
Well, we, we could respond and just say that you, you as a board decided they'd like to keep it an annual lease. And would they be um. Open to an increase because of.
We don't have a space remodeled for them.
Well, the heating and cooling is there. It's just that it's not been painted and.
But. But will we, will we have it done by? Will we have it done by July first? When their new lease starts?
Questionable.
That's what I mean.
That's getting close right now.
Yeah.
Unless you wanna wait next year, ask. For additional rent because of, you know, it'd be done at that point.
So here and we should. Just continue with a mo- one year contract?
Yeah.
And then next year, when everything's done, maybe renegotiate and decide a year and increase or.
Annual and then next year.
So yeah, we can, we'll do it a one year. I'll make a motion to do a one year extension of the current base.
And add a hundred and fifty bucks. Okay.
So we're just doing an extension.
I'll make a, I'll second that.
There's a motion and it's looking anymore discussion. If not, all in favor, stating that they're saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I circle back to um. Number eight, the freaky wall, I. Texted concrete creators and they said they could start July, the first part of July. What about for something like that on the, we're gonna have to get rid of half that parking lot. So is that an issue in July? We do it then? For any reason?
As far as parking.
Yeah, no, I mean, just supposed to have to, we're gonna have to block off half that. We'll lose half the spots.
No, I don't think so. I mean, yeah, we own the building.
Yeah.
Street parking and there's access to get. There's free parking and there's access to get down.
Yeah.
How many cars on their daily tree?
Well, sometimes it's, it's pretty full.
V eight.
V eight, probably busy.
Sometimes it's full.
Well, they were just like cutting off those. What is it?
Yeah, the, no, kind of a whole.
I think what you did have the boys are gonna park out in the street for a while.
Yes.
Or three forty home.
Yes.
You know, I mean, I know they have parked at the courthouse before. You know, we instructed employees to park in the courthouse to leave the parking open.
Just, there's, there's gonna be probably two, three weeks there of just, uh. I don't know, but a couple of weeks for sure to do that, right? Please, they said, they said all over a week for sure, so. But, um. First part of July is what he's thinking, so. Okay, I'm gonna put that on the radio. Great, thanks.
Who? Sure, me.
All right. Item number. Ten, approve the twenty E Iowa precinct Atlas institutional withdrawal letter.
As you know, we got ten X, so we have to withdraw because we are in a twenty eighty with precinct that was. You need to withdraw from. The twenty eighty. In order to not pay. For it next year.
That's what this is for.
Yes.
So, yeah. So.
All right, I'll second. There's no motion in a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
You need to.
They have a letter here, so.
You may need to. Is it finally just a motion?
Yeah.
Going out the twenty eighty protection.
They just, they said they needed a letter with the board, um, at the time.
All right, item number eleven, discuss the Maple River watershed system account.
Okay, um. I became aware that they've had some short, uh, extra bills after maybe there's issues. On ammonia levels and, uh. We're gonna need to look at that and, um, Mike and I are both on that board, but I just wanna bring you guys up to date. Uh, Mike and I are gonna try to reach out to some people from Maple River and we're gonna see what we can work on to get this thing resolved. And get those bills paid, uh, to, or come up with some more money. I think they got the correction. I, there's a lot of phone conversations. Jared Hayes and. R and R and a few other people and, uh. I think we got things resolved. It's just a matter of we gotta come up with money now to take care of. Paying the toll. So. But suddenly it's gonna be on a rotation system now. Well, that's what needs to be done on a rotation system. Uh, I think they kinda got behind it. Well, and the other problem what happened is I think. As Jared explained, that we live in this dry time now, and we didn't have enough volume flowing, and that's why the ammonia levels. So this is all done according to what do you, it needs to be done, so, it's un, unending stance, so. But. So the subject is from pumping out the, the properties.
Yes.
Satellites, but before they drain into the main.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we weren't receiving enough cash flow or.
Yeah, uh, we need to look at their rates to, that's be a part of this thing. Those are, are all the presidents who use it for all the Maple River. I make river.
So. Going forward. We'll cover that bill and then.
Well, we're gonna have to see what they do. See, the last time we redid it alone, they came up with some. Money they had there, and I don't get, get some that I love yet or not.
So you're gonna do around people then?
Well, I think we're just gonna talk, we're just gonna have a conversation a few people. People in control out there, basically.
Who suggested that it was going, needs to go on a rotating?
Do you know?
I did a little, just a little checking. They have about forty two users that are paying fifty five dollars a month, which is about twenty three hundred dollars. A month. Revenue's coming in. And the bills we have that we're holding are about, um. Just for easy math, about three times that amount. So. They, they also have bills that they pay monthly to Jared Hayes to utilities, um. For testing that Jared sends in and. Loan that they're supposed to be paying the county back. I mean, that, the loan is not even included in that because. I. I didn't include that because we're a little more lenient on what we can do for them than a vendor is.
The county's the fiscal engine who pays.
My, my question is, is, and no offense to you or whoever was on this board when, when it happened, but where did we go wrong thinking that forty two users are gonna pay this back?
And all these bills. Argument was done when they did it. I wanted the grades of higher.
Yeah.
But their, their ideas, they want, they thought they can make it work. And they won that argument, everybody, uh. But like Mount Carmel up there, they have built a reserve system. Maple River has not built up reserve. That's. That part of the problem, they didn't have the money, they didn't. And, uh, I knew this was getting tight here, but I didn't know, well, I, I wasn't aware of. Tell us. Two weeks ago, I turned these out Sandy bills.
So we'll need all that information when we go to meet with them probably, so.
Huh?
I said, we'll need all that information when we go to meet with them.
So.
I, I don't know, that's.
Still revolving loan with.
Yeah, so the county, the county used local option money to pay for the project and they're paying us back.
The loan was based through rural development. And. I'm not saying rural development. Pain and ass would be at work, but. So we had the money in local option and we paid it off and they. They're paying us interest rate higher than what we could get through our local option at that time. So we did that with both Maple River and Mount Carmel. But Mount Carmel, they were, um, kept their rates up to so they could build reserve. Uh, this year then, that's when we did the loan for Maple River. They came up with some mu- extra money. Of course, you gotta remember, these are. Totally different systems. Maple River is more like. Complicated. So their bill was probably a little higher, but anyway. Uh, they came up with some local money to off. Take by that long value. Uh, so. But they, they kept the rates low too. I just wanna be you guys, be a fool. I don't, I don't want to. Well.
Let me know where that goes as far as.
Yeah, we need to, we'll have to meet with them.
Yeah, you know, I'm, if they don't have. The most we'll have to be involved with is, I, I think we need to get these bills paid. If they can't come up with a little bit of money. We got these bills, we got, we gotta pay them for rates breaks. So most I think this happens. I'd suggest we may have to. Take some money out of local option. Extend their loan back at bigger. Give this call out, because we can't look at those bills, so.
Yeah, cause just up in their, their stuff is not gonna pay us off. So, so when you say there's three times amount of. Bills out there. But we need to up the rate and we need to.
Yeah.
Back, we need to back.
Said they don't have any meter job.
I said, we need to up the rates and we need to backfill their loan.
The problem is, we did the loan. Not that long ago.
Yeah.
And we're.
We're in this situation.
Again, so something's gotta.
Something's gotta change. Yeah. But, and, and, yeah, in the same sense. So they're, they're, uh. Fifty five dollars a month just for sewer on their house right now, right?
See, and to answer your question, they are all the same because they have. Three different water systems. We got private, they got rural water, and they got, there's also a community well. Wow, so. So no, none of, none of them have meters except for rural or and. Or try to fly.
I see, you can't, yeah, you can't, you can't base it on water usage, yeah.
Well, and maybe, actually, Mount Carmel, same way.
Okay.
But Mark, Mount Carmel system is. A fraction of the maintenance and upkeep.
Yeah.
Has the Maple River.
Our biggest problem, my problem probably is, uh. Some people's usage of the system, they footstove down, it shouldn't have. Execution, folks. That's real stuff or commercial stuff or there's no.
Mm-hmm. Wrong kind of toilet paper.
Yeah, wrong kind of toilet paper, female products, um, if you wanna really know. Charm in is the worst one.
Okay. Well, there's nominee is go forward to that conversation. I've got some more details on which items are key involved. Certainly. All right, item number twelve, manure management annual updates. We have twin mills. West site section thirty two Pleasant Valley, Pleasant Valley Township, the change crop rotation or optimum yields and use manure analysis. Quant farm section twenty seven Pleasant Valley, the four year plan. Nice research center section thirty five Sheraton Health, no changes. Opplement Peters section twenty nine Washington Township, no changes. Delray Theater section fifty one township four year plan. Swanson site section five Jasper township four year plan. H I Farms section six, results township no changes. And Ken Sanders. Section nineteen, the miller's township no changes and.
I can go. Um, it's been two weeks. Kinda forget a lot of that stuff, but ma- mon- two weeks ago on Monday, I had conservation meeting out here. Um. Nothing too exciting there. On Tuesday, we had the May fourth, we had Board of Health meeting. And last week, uh. I didn't have a whole lot of county stuff. I went to the freaky building about four times and that's it.
We're getting those.
Yep.
Do you have anything this week?
I do not have anything on my schedule this week. Well, unless me and Jean go and try, we're gonna try putting together, uh. Meeting with, um. Someone in Maple River, so.
I can go, um, so two weeks ago. Had emergency preparedness. Um. Just. So you know, it's kinda goes in with the safety, um. The three. The emergency preparedness carry and then the two public health ladies, um. They did go through a training, the trainer for state, um, A A D class, so they just have to have, um, a class where they're observed. Eat all three of them, and then they will be able to provide first aid training. For the county. And for our employees, um. At no charge, so. That will be good. I had D cat, um. On sixteen. And, uh, I'm also the chair of that. Committee, so, um, they do have a backup chair, but. They are looking, that they would like another supervisor because they have trouble making forum. And meeting forum, so, um, I send you her information. They're very, they're very easy people to work with. Um, and then the twenty first, we had a. A safety committee meeting, and that went very well, and if you see Jamie Webker. And Jeff Cullen, they agreed to kind of. Tag team co-chair the safety committee for a couple of months until we can. You know, get another supervisor in there and, um. Bill Dickey was there and he did say that. There are no other counties that he knows of that have a board of supervisor chairing the safety committee, so, um. It really would be nice to. You know. They, they can figure that out, and they seem to be stepping up, so that's, that's a good thing, um. From where we started and to where we are now, you have some continuous. Engagement, and I think you'll be able to move forward, and then, um, on Wednesday. I had hazmat. Um, they did have, um, someone from the summit, um. CEO, uh, pipeline people from, it was just mostly informational and they're gonna be setting up. Um, some training for the first, uh. The first responders, and then Andy. From Asia Five, I'm. I can't think of his last name, but he's a. Very knowledgeable and he will be coming here. On June. Is it third? Our next meeting, yes, June third, um, he'll be explaining this, some of the services that we are receiving for the money that we pay, and he's also going to bring the truck. So.
And.
I asked him to, so.
What date is that?
But are you, are you just referring to the calls to state?
It's, um.
How often they use the truck?
Yeah, or goes.
Um. It's also in an email, uh, that there's a log in the email. I think I forward it to you, but, um, it's in one of the attachments of everything they've done since the meeting prior. Um. So, um. And I don't really, and I have newspaper radio today. And that's, I don't have anything this week.
Nothing.
That I can think of.
Yeah, I can go now. On this, Wednesday fifteenth has new options that executive board, we, uh, we have a, we. Do some revisions on our budget for the building project that we're going through on our garage. Through for head start. And, um, Thursday, we had C C G P had an executive board meeting. Uh, basically talked about the house. Seven one two open house on June fifth, and then also. Uh, the program on June eighteenth for childcare and well workforce. You know, you know, Western Iowa Networks, it's by an invite. And then we talked about our business retention program. About different, um, things like that. Also had a conversation with the Veron Durs, uh, also that day. And, uh, then on Friday was the S center board meeting, uh. Was, um. We kinda held up on our budget because of, uh, some issues with far as what, we weren't sure what we're gonna be getting for the rest come. Up there, there's some questions that we. Might have by a different location. Which I found out since, we are in front of me, it's still the same place and that we did get that resolved, but there was some real. Questions on where we're gonna, if we're gonna stay with the data or they're at. Um. Uh, we recruited financials, uh. As of that day, there was thirteen kids entered, uh, the average ninety point two seven for the month before. Uh, and we're also taking Macy kids now, just another Indian reservation. At two hundred dollars a day. Uh, then on Wednesday, this last week. I had Rowan Hills board meeting, uh, basically. We went through approved a whole bunch of different contracts for different, uh, vendors. Uh, we did have, uh, uh. Lot of. Vendors coming, asking for extra money, uh, you know, there, I think you got the impression that. We're gonna have to dispose of all this money for the end of the year, uh, next year, and, uh. The problem is that we are concerned with board, I address the two, that if we do, the states have probably come back boss. Cause they're, they're outside of school with what the plan is. So, um, I'll go through, there's a lot of. Or downtown, uh, some, I did get one, I think I had three requests, they only got one request through. Uh, so. Uh, we did have a discussion about that, beans, our region has. Property. What's gonna happen with that? They can't get a straight answer out of the state from on that, so we don't know, um. And, uh. That's what we had to see. Then, uh, I had several comments called Zach and Veron, so, so issues. Then I did also ask Paul Scherl, they have another issue that's going on in state on, um. June, um, intention center and, uh, I don't know what else. Then I also had a sign, uh, guidance, that start of, you know. And then I had, been a lot of calling them regarding Maple River. This week I had the policy council tonight, and Thursday is new opportunity board meeting, and if we get something lined up on Maple River in the first week. Funny, gets that resolved. Hanging on my wish.
A second, please. Yeah, you don't usually talk that fast. Okay, thanks.
I do this when I've been up. Um.
There it goes.
It's short. Two weeks ago today, I went down to Metro Waste Recycling and grinds to a division system.
Hey, was that cool?
Kinda. I didn't have a clue that that place is kinda like behind Toyota, uh, Des Moines right there.
Yep.
I see a lot of garbage truck. Well, that's where all the recycling is. So then on Tuesday morning, we had the executive board meeting, solid waste commissioner. And he said it was a no-go for us. Then you use it as a last chance, and like these bottles are squished.
Yep.
And to give a suction cup to stick to it and throw it to the right container, it, yeah, it. It wouldn't work for.
What year?
It's not worth that. Three, three quarter million dollars estimate to replace one person. Um, May sixteenth, I did meet with the county attorney for a couple hours. Uh, a lot of different subjects. Then last Monday, Zach and I worked on scope of the basement where the public defender is gonna be for carpet and paint quotes. He's getting those last weekend, this week, and then last Monday again was R S B P mediator. Tuesday at the end was C C G P board meeting. Wednesday at ten o'clock was debating at Bluestone Punch List, no issues there. Um. Thursday went through Rose Plains. Lots of issues, a new equipment perhaps. Friday courthouse cables, the board of supervisors furniture did get delivered on Friday. And then this week, uh, today, right now, S E H and maybe interdo- their final punch list walkthrough. Right at courthouse for that, I don't expect or foresee anything.
Courthouse for that, and I don't expect or foresee anything. Come up on that, and then Friday up seven one two. Seven chamber coffee looks like. And the uh, ground floor, the basement fixtures have all been installed, there was a cleaning crew there yesterday, they did a phenomenal job. Looks, everything down there looks brand new, and I think, um, I'm waiting to hear if uh. Grant will be done, or meet next week, could be, I'm not sure.
I talked to rather to Nick at the. Bouncy Carrier. He's talking like maybe not this week.
He texted me this morning and said he would let me know since he hears. And if that is our meeting, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. In no particular order. I had Western two weeks ago, and then I've been in the porkhouse these past two weeks with H U and C Remo. I went to boarding stones to get the furniture moved to the courthouse. I've been emailing and having a conversation with Jason. Power Ridge and then a couple of those different. Didn't have a conversation with Sarah Hallwell, and you guys will see she's sending you guys a email with a. A presentation that she's, that she received from Cozo, and then also asking that we have our ordinance. Updated as soon as possible, so. Um, I also had the ambulance hit another deer, but luckily we had a deer guard on the ambulance. Um, we also lost power in the courthouse last week, we will be talking about that with our backup generator, but the courthouse did. Leave about fifteen minutes early because there was no power in the theaters. Um, I did reach out to Scott to get some quotes, and then the courthouse lower level. Paint and. Perfect, reached out to Mike to get the freaky building wall, talked to Gene. This upcoming week, courting, this is gonna be dependent by, um. We did have, I know you and I talked about. A group wanting to come talk to us about the two mile or our two mile zoning. I'm fine with that as long as we're back in the courthouse, can they wait, could you figure out, if we're not back, can they wait one more week?
I don't know, cuz there's like twenty some people, it sounded like that they're gonna be at the meeting. So I'm assuming they have already told all twenty people that it's, that they're on the agenda. I mean, we could possibly meet in one of those rooms. We can, I can check with them, I have to make sure that.
That's for next week, Monday, yeah.
I, I'll check with her, um, when I leave, if. So I have to check and make sure I'm still on for training tomorrow out here, I can ask her if those rooms are open. And if we do have to meet here, if somebody wants to come out here with me on Friday afternoon, which we probably need to, or maybe. Have to be out here earlier Monday. Cuz I'm guessing we'll need to change the tables and stuff, but hopefully we will have to do that.
Okay, so that, right, two mile and also ordinances, um. I would like to. Really get these rerat, uh, kind of by, um. We've been working on this, I think about a year and a half, and we've got a lot of department heads that have a lot of officials that have stepped up and done some kind of work for their own departments. I really wanna wait on that one until we're truly back in the courthouse, so that if any of the department heads or elected officials need to come. Chat with us while we're going through the ordinances, they can just come down the stairs instead of dragging out here, so saving time. But I do think when we have the two mile and ordinances, we need to extend that offer to the county attorney or his assistant county attorney. To be present for both of those. Um, and then the last thing, I will be going to the Chamber Coffee at the seven one two Friday. And when we do do the move, I just wanted to let the public know. It could be questionable if we will be live streaming or not, just until our system gets running in the courthouse and. So it could be questionable for about a week or two. Um. It all might be able to provide a, an hour or something, but just. I.
Oh, no. We're thinking that's it. Yeah. Courtney, what are you doing? Uh, Manny Main Street will be here at nine on the third, um, with an update from Gene. Is it Bogey or Vogue? And then at ten, we'll have a, the citizens are gonna present a request to retract the two mile limit, um. They're saying anywhere from ten to twenty people, maybe here to. Part of that, um, obviously that's the day before the primary, so. Um, absentee voting has been. Very, very, very low. Vision, that's a pretty good indicator of turnout, so if anybody's watching or listening. Get out and vote on the.
Thank you, also really quick, I'd like to thank Scott for sending in two issues this morning, so I have ten minutes.
I will also say, uh. I know we ain't done yet, but I think uh. I appreciate Scott covering it for us, and the point for something or two, I had a conversation with Tony.
Appreciate you.
We'll have the first.
I'm gone Wednesday all day.
Thursday, I've got a board meeting at four o'clock, otherwise, um.